All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any oath of offices. We did that last month, right? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mizouni?
Here.
Commissioner Parkham?
Here.
Commissioner Weir?
Here.
Commissioner Zinda?
Here.
Chair of the committee?
Here. All right, non-agenda items. Public comment. This is a time set aside for those wishing to address the commission on matters that fall under the authority of commission and are not listed on the agenda. Does anybody have anything?
Well, Holly Hansard to 11 Pine Street, 334 East Lake Street. As always, I am concerned about the health and safety matter of what I see affecting the youth and adults in the city, particularly the two 27-year-olds that were my son's age who are recently incarcerated.
Excuse me, Holly, I'm really having trouble hearing what you're saying.
Oh, sorry, I'm just voicing my concern for the general health and safety of our community to do to the drug use amongst youth and young adults such as the heroin epidemic and meth. I see that on the streets and it contributes to theft and I'm very concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, do we have any conflicts of interest on anything on the agenda tonight? All right, public hearings. Item A on the public hearing agenda, draft ordinance for fences, item from February 21st, 2018, placed on public hearing agenda for comments, recommendations to council.
Let me introduce this. When the council considered ordinance 440, which amended the municipal code in regard to fences and what was the allowable materials, ordinance that was drafted by the planning commission and forwarded on to the council with a recommendation of adoption, they had two concerns, one of which was what happened to existing fences that did not meet that particular ordinance. They instructed the city attorney to prepare the ordinance that is in front of you. It calls for the amortization of the investment. Therefore, a fence that is in lawful existence on the date that ordinance 440 was adopted would be allowed to maintain for a period of 10 years with two exceptions. If it became unsafe or required repair or replacement under certain circumstances, then the newer replacement fence would have to comply with the new ordinance. The requirement is that if the total cost for the repair or replacement exceeds 25% of the cost of simply replacing with a new fence, then the new fence, meeting the criteria of 440, would have to be approved, that they could not repair the pre-existing fence with the materials that they had before. This was the city attorney's recommendation as to the appropriate length of time after having reviewed California law.
Right. So now we're supposed to have a presentation by the project proponent. I'm assuming in that case, this is, that's you, Ron. So, item B would be testimony by interested parties in support of the project, in support of this ordinance amendment. Does anybody have anything to say? Presentation by project opponent. Does anybody disagree with the changes in the ordinance?
Of the whole ordinance, not just that one section. Holly Hansard to 11 Pine Street, 334 East Lake.
Just the, just the changes that were made.
Such as existing fences repairs to existing and gone. When, and going over it, I, I'm a little slow in math, but I didn't understand that paragraph when he said if the materials exceeds 25% of his or her estimate, you can't repair it with the same. I don't understand that. It's like not in plain English to me. I don't understand, so maybe you guys could clarify for that for me later. Maybe it could be written a little bit different. Maybe it is clear, it's just my, me, but I don't understand it. I'll have to go through it a few times and maybe I'll understand it. And then also lawful existence. Fences were already in lawful existence, okay. By nature, their design or physical condition, they constitute an immediate hazard to public safety, so what is that? Who's going to define that? I mean, if somebody doesn't like somebody and they happen to be in position of power, how are we going to be protected from that? I don't know. So, okay, immediate safety like it's going to cut somebody's head off, all right, we can go for that, but as far as a slight glare or something, I don't know, or a strong glare, whatever. And then, amazing the estimates of that amortization, I don't understand. I don't understand the value that you're giving to that on the repair. Anyway, and broken fences, my concern would be not just for us who have the metal fences, but, you know, not everybody here in the city of Weed is wealthy and not everyone can fix it in X amount of days. And so, I don't know, there isn't a day set on here, a time limit. I don't know if you don't want a time limit, or if you're going to give them when they can afford it, or if they're just willing to fix it. Or I see a lot of fences in town, wooden, as we all see, that are in dire need of repair and so there's no time limit, so you might consider having some, addressing that either don't allow a time, or, or give something reasonable on that. And of course, there's the definition of if the city determines it to be disrepaired to any cause, you know, after windstorm, so, you know, what do you, what do you do? You get to be penalized in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, a year, I don't know. And then amortization of existing fences, even though the attorney recommended 10 years, I think that we who have built our fences, per the recommendation of the planning commission, all the voices concerned, that we have built them to stand longer than 10 years. We have built them to withstand hurricane force, gale force, maybe not hurricane force in Florida, but, you know, strong force winds, secure as all heck, and great sacrifice, certainly for me, labor time, effort, to make them very strong and sturdy, per your recommendation, in 10 years. We're not building a fence for just 10 years, please help me, God. So, thank you very much, and so I questioned that one too. Perhaps we can have more discussion on that and for practical measures, and I don't think amortization is really fair at all, but thank you.
Thank you, Holly. All right, Ron, do you have a response to any of her concerns?
Anything I say will be used against the city in future litigation.
Okay.
So, no, they're standard provisions and they're similar to what we have in regard to other non-conforming uses in regard to buildings.
All right, does anybody else have anything to say, either for or against? All right, do I have to bang the gavel for closing the public hearing?
Nope, we have another.
Oh, we do, okay, go ahead.
Gary Fulmer, 210 Broadway, used to reside there before fire. After the fire, seeing what was going on there, was getting ready to build and decided to move elsewhere. Views were really bad and bright. Before the fire, there was no metal fence that looked anything like that. There was chain link up against my property, and from my property going away to the other street on Pine was an old wooden fence that burnt down.
I, I understand your, your comments, but right now, we're discussing just the changes of the ordinance and not any specific property. There's another item on the agenda that maybe you want to comment on? Okay. Anybody else? All right, public hearing is now closed. Planning commission discussion of project. Does anybody have anything?
No.
Monica? All right, action. Does anybody want to move on this?
Are we referring this to the city council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I move that ordinance on, in regard to the fences, be passed from us on to the city council for their consideration.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
You didn't give me a chance.
Oh, sorry about that.
He's too fast.
I'm new to this, so you can bear with me here. All right, is there anybody opposed? No, okay. All right. Next item on public hearings agenda, revocation hearing for a fence permit. Commission to consider revocation of fence permit due to insufficient progress by Holly Hansard at 211 Pine Street.
The city code provides that a permit for construction may be revoked upon good cause by the city council, but only after receiving a recommendation from the planning commission. Therefore, we asked you to set this public hearing, and we're asking you today to revoke the four permits that exist for 211 Pine Street. The property owner, Holly Hansard, has applied for four fence permits since 2004. I'm going to have 14 different exhibits that I'm going to submit. They are, in order to avoid my getting up 14 times and providing you with each and every one of them, I've labeled them with a number in red on the upper right-hand corner, and I've put all 14 in front of you. I will go through them one by one. Copies have been provided to the property owner. The exhibit number one is the first application for a fence permit that was submitted by Ms. Hansard. She did so on November 15th, 2014. She sought to construct 70 linear feet of six-foot-high fencing constructed of 1x6 cedar fencing and approximately 122 linear feet of six-foot-high fencing, also constructed of 1x6 cedar fencing on a second property line. I have attached to the application the diagram that she submitted to us. Unfortunately, the diagram was a little large, but it shows, if you look at the map up there of her property, permit number one is in blue, and you'll see that it's the two triangular pieces going towards Pine Street and terminating 20 feet off of the Pine Street right-of-way. I've also attached my letter of March 12th, 2015, which approved the permit as she had presented it. I ask you to look specifically at paragraph number two, labeled paragraph number two, that the permit was approved provided the fencing material would be as proposed, and that was 1x6 cedar or steel hog wire panels. Exhibit number two is a photograph that I took yesterday from Pine Street right-of-way of the 70-foot fencing on the westerly portion of the two parcels. And you'll notice that the construction material is neither 1x6 cedar or the hog wire panels. Exhibit number three is the roughly 122 linear feet, and you'll notice it too is not constructed of the material as required under the permit approval. Notice also in the letter granting approval that the permit was only approved in part because of the 122 feet of fencing adjacent to 323 Pine Street, which is the property to the right. It was limited in height from Pine Street itself, the 20 feet from Pine Street, to the face of the house at 323 Pine Street, to only 48 inches in height. I think that you can see from exhibit number three that there is a slight differential in height, but that the 48-inch height did not go the entire distance that it was intended to. I want to make a point about giving you the photographs and pointing out discrepancies between what was constructed and what the permit was granted for construction. We are not here tonight to ask her to modify her fence. We're not here to tear down her fence. We're not here to give her an order compelling her to do anything in regard to the fence. The only thing we're seeking tonight is a revocation of her building permits to simply stop construction, no more construction, unless it is in conformity with the new ordinance 440. The, whether or not the council wishes to initiate any action to require any modification of the fencing based on her non-compliance, that will be up to the council. I can tell you that neither of the two fences constructed under permit number one will be deemed under the amortization ordinance as having been lawfully established because they were not constructed in accord with the permit as granted. The reason I'm giving you that information is not because I'm trying to taint your opinion, rather I am anticipating a defense, and I am laying the groundwork that that defense is not going to be allowable under this instance. And I'll explain that when I get to the issue of following the introduction of all four permits.
May I, may I ask a question, just because I'm not familiar with the steel hog wire panel. I, that's new, a new term for me. What would that be? I'm just trying to be...
I couldn't tell you, because I don't know what it is either.
Okay.
It's proper chain link.
There may be somebody on the panel that does know that. But it, it is not sheet metal, not roofing material.
No, no, no.
The fourth exhibit is the second application for permit. This was submitted by Ms. Hansard on 4/29/2015. The permit application asked for 60 feet of fencing, six foot in height, constructed of a combination of redwood 2x4, a metal panel, and a copper accent topping on the fence. You'll notice in the exhibit that we've attached that she drew a diagram of what that was going to look like, as well as indicating where the fence would be built. The fencing was built in item number two. Now, since orange was so similar to the red color number three, I doubled the line, so you can see it's the far western line of 60 feet that she constructed. The construction of that 60 feet is lawfully erected because it at least was the right height, whether it's lawfully erected because of change in becoming fully metal instead of the combination of redwood 2x4, metal paneling with copper accent would be a decision of the council to make. This permit was granted on May 11th, 2015. You see my letter granting it attached to exhibit four. Again, I point you to the second paragraph, the numbered second paragraph. The fencing material shall be as proposed per plan submitted. I suggest to you it was not. Item number five in my exhibits is the third that was submitted by Ms. Hansard. This one was, was submitted June 15th, 2015. The application asked for 60 feet and an additional 40.5 feet adjacent to 324 Broadway. This time, it was proposed that the fencing material would be railroadized and used galvanized roofing materials. The fence height was limited, as literally all fences in the city with only the exceptions approved by the planning commission, to six feet in height. And you'll see my letter of approval for the fence permit of August 19th, 2015, and I point to paragraph three. The privacy fencing shall not exceed six feet in height from grade. Exhibit number six, I was taken from the alley, because I did not want to step on the property owner's property without permission. With the building permits, our building inspection and our code enforcement officers have the right to enter on to property, but I did not want to make the allegation that the city manager had that same right. I apologize for the distance from the, the cornered property. You see it in, in red there as number three that was issued. It, it, it's this shape, this way, and then down, this way and down. The reason I point to this is I want you to see the debris that's piled at the bottom of the fence. The building inspector did inspect this fence and found that it exceeded six foot in height and issued an order compelling the property owner to reduce the height. The property owner, up to this day, has continued and refused to abide by the order of the building inspector. Rather, what she has done is she's attempted to modify the grade on her side of the property by bringing dirt and rocks and piling it up at the base of the fence. That's what you see from the red bucket to the right.
Excuse me, Ron.
The problem is, for the Moser sitting on the other side of the property, they still see more than six-foot fence. The six-foot height is for the protection of adjacent property owners, so changing the grade on one side of the fence is not reducing the fence to meet the requirements of the code.
I have a quick question, Ron. Do you need a permit to change the grade?
Yes.
Was there a permit applied for?
I'm going to take that back. There are some changes in grade that you can make without a permit, as long as you are not changing the drainage, so that you're not creating a situation where water would normally run onto your property and you change the grade to force the property to go to your neighbor's property. So, for example, if you're familiar with the Woodridge area, there was a lot that was just cleared, ready for construction. No grading permit was necessary for that, and I would not take the position that she is required to have a grading permit for the little activity that she's doing.
Okay.
Exhibit number seven is the fourth permit application. It was applied for on August 25th, 2015, and she sought a significant amount of fencing, basically to fill in all of the remaining fencing. But because sections were too tall and other sections were not permitted by the code, it was only approved in part, and you'll see in the letter that I've attached, which is the approval from August 25th, that it was only those areas that were in yellow and had the okay on them. So I copied this in color to you to show you that it was roughly the closing of the south side of the property from the two fences that she had in number two and three, and also the gate down below by Pine Street, as well as four-foot-high fencing to go from the point of where the fencing ended at 20 feet from the Pine Street right-of-way to the Pine Street right-of-way. The remainder of the request was denied, and she was invited by the building inspector on October 8th to come in and to address the remainder because of height concerns. She received a second notice on October 23rd, 2015, to come in and address the remainder. She did not. So the four permits that were granted are showing up there, and you'll notice that there are some areas that, of the property that were not authorized. Rather than come in and speak to him, what she did was complete the fencing as she originally requested it, even though it was not approved. So exhibit A, um, did you notice on the, there are drawing on exhibit seven, this thing called a one-foot medical shade art?
Yeah, you saw that.
Yeah, well, she made it, and that's a picture of the three, I really, because I was only on the, they're standalone and just stand in the middle of her property. They are structures. A building permit is required for them. No building permit was obtained. She attempted to obtain a fence permit for them, but they are not fencing. She asked for one, she built three. I understand it's very difficult to see them because of my angle, but it was the only angle I had without trespassing on her property. Item, exhibit number nine will show you the fencing all the way along the property line. So the fact that she only received partial approval wasn't recognized by her. So the fact that she only received partial approval wasn't recognized by her. During the discussions that we had on September 14th, 2017, and again on October 12th, 2019, when the consul considered the adoption of ordinance 440-2017, an ordinance that amended the municipal court as it regulates fences, hedges, and walls, consul expressed some concern about safety. If a metal fence was not completed, they discussed whether there would be sharp edges and the possibility of potentially pieces flying off due to the fence not having the final intended bracing and support. Consul asked not only the city attorney to deal with the issue of amortization, but asked staff if we would look into the issue of uncompleted fences. Following consultation with the city attorney, I wrote to Ms. Hansard and to two other applicants who had existing permits and were still in the process of construction. And I asked them to complete their fences under their existing permits within the next ninety days. Exhibit 10 is my letter to Ms. Hansard. The other two fences were completed within that period of time, inspected and signed off on. When her fence was not completed within the ninety days, I wrote to her on February 12th, 2018, advising her that I was taking action to revoke the permits. And that is exhibit number 11. In reply, we received correspondence from Ms. Hansard requesting public records, demanding to know what authority I had to set a time limit, wanting specifically a written document showing me what instructions the consul had given to me. In reply to her, I informed her basically that the consul set the ninety-day time period with their discussions, both with the ordinance and thereafter with staff meetings. That's item 12. Item 13 is that I tried to give her additional information to try to explain to her that she really didn't have the right to tell me how to do my job, that she did have the right to challenge the ninety days. She can tell you that that's unreasonable, and she can make an effort to try to get you to give her additional time. Essentially, she's been building the fence for three years. As of today, since the first permit was issued March 12th, 2015, she's had a total 1,104 days to complete construction of a fence. She did not construct the fence of cedar as required by permit one. She did not construct the fence of redwood or metal panel with copper accent as required of permit number two. She did not keep the fence within six foot of height as required by number three. And she's constructed fencing in areas not approved with permit number four. The reason I tell you that is what she is doing when she comes in and says, "Give me more time," is she's asking for equity from you. In other words, relief from penalties. But she's not entitled to relief because of the legal doctrine of clean hands. She acted in bad faith and did not construct the fence as set forth in the plans and has not remedied the errors when they were brought to her attention. And therefore, she really does not have the right to stand here and ask you for more time. When the rules change, an individual who has a valid permit issued before the change has a right to complete their work under the existing permit. But for how long should that right to violate the current law exist? We can look at other rules for guidance. Building code does not apply to fences. The building code says that for residential and commercial structure, a permit as good for one year can be extended for an additional 280-day periods or a total of two years to build a house. She's had three years to build a fence. Since a home is much more complicated to construct than a fence, surely a fence permit should have a shorter time period. Amortization is another area where we can gather some indication of what is a reasonable time limit. Generally, the amortization of a structure or a building is 20 years. We know from having done our research that for fences, it's about 10 years. That's why the ordinance was written the way it was by the city attorney. If one-half the time period for a fence for amortization compared to a building, then one-half the time period for a permit for a fence should be similar to a building. And therefore, our position is that ninety days was not unreasonable under the circumstances. Exhibit number 14 was her email to us telling us what she thought was a reasonable time period. I've underlined it in green. Second paragraph. I argue that I needed at least five years or no time period, no time limit, to complete the construction of a fence. She's already had three. Give her another five, and she's had eight. Then give her 10 years amortization after that, and she's got 18 with a fence that doesn't meet the current code. I'm suggesting to you that her position is unreasonable in light of the investment that she's making in the fence. And because of her actions, I think it's fully reasonable for the city to say, "Stop constructing under the permits that you have right now. And if you want to do anything further other than simply modifying the fence so that it meets the height limitations of our code, then do so under the current rules." That's our position. At this point, I would move for admission of the 14 exhibits.
I move the 14 exhibits be entered into the record.
One second, ma'am.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Can I speak somewhere here? Can I hear my...
You're finished with your presentation, Ron?
I'm finished.
All right. Any testimony from interested parties in support of the revocation?
Speaking interim right now, right?
Yes.
I'm allowed. Gary Fulmer, 210 Broadway, until the fire date of September 15th, 2014. The fences that were there before were made out of wood and chain link. I watched one of them burn all the way back to my property, fighting it with garden hoses with my next-door neighbor, prior to the fire. After the fire, I leveled the lot and was getting ready to rebuild a house. When I seen what was happening there, I decided to move elsewhere. Not just because of that, there was other reasons, too. After building a new house with a permit, within eight months, me and my family signed off, I see what's going on over there. I put my property up for sale. I had somebody come there in the evening hour to look at it, and they seemed to be interested. So I said, "Why don't you talk it over with your family? Come back tomorrow in the daytime, when the mill's running and the neighbors are home and you can see the surroundings. Get back with me then." And the lady said, "Okay." She called me back the next day after she had visited the property with her family and decided she did not want to purchase the property because of the surroundings. And I don't believe it was either one of my neighbor's houses.
Thank you, Gary.
Live at 184 Broadway Avenue, Weed. And Holly has pretty much built a wrecking yard fence. Anybody that comes over there thinks that there's a wrecking yard there. It really helps to improve your property when you walk outside. Right now, we're in the process of building a deck in the back so we can go out and enjoy the backyard and look at a wrecking yard fence in the back. It looks terrible. Holly is a very intelligent lady, and I don't understand her logic in building such a hideous-looking fence. I don't like it. I don't have any friends that have come over and had said anything nice about it. If the sun is shining just right, the glare is so hard that you cannot look, it's terrible. But yet, she wants to have such a hideous-looking fence. It may be strong, withstand wind and everything like that. I don't quite understand it. And then, we do everything by the book, and she can't, she cannot follow permits or do anything right. I don't quite understand it. But anyhow, as you can probably understand what I'm trying to say is, I'm not happy with it. I don't know what can be done. I still don't understand why in the world she's building such a hideous-looking fence. She has no house there. If it were me and had a little tiny property and had no money, I'd go ahead and sell it and maybe gain some money. But I do know one of the reasons why she's doing what she's doing is because her father owned that property prior to the fire. And I know it's probably more sentimental value than anything else, but why can't she build something nice there instead of something hideous? Anyhow, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say? All right. Testimony by interested parties in opposition to the revocation. Now is your time.
First of all, I'm about to faint. I'm shaking. I wish that I could have been able to address Ron's not 100% accurate description of me and my situation here. Even where we speak about the copper and that drawing, I do have the copper there. It is actually a very attractive place on my property. And what happened is when the wood panels got weathered, I did reasonably put metal on it to beautify it. I have, where you see by the three, two, three, whatever it is, the grass is former property, the abbey's property now, the Lynnville's former property from Pine Street, that is cedar. When I did that, I constructed it this last winter desperately, and I forgot exactly what it said where on the permits. However... Does this turn off? Sorry. In one of the permits, I requested, and wherever I am allowed to put a six-foot fence. So I wish that I could have been able to address Ron's thing point by point because I'm kind of shaky, flustered, can't think, had been this way since the Bowles fire and before. Unlike some people, such as the Moschers and other people who may or may not hate me for whatever reason, some people didn't have insurance, but certainly the Fulmers had insurance and the Moschers had insurance and the Tappies had insurance, and I'm grateful for that. Or some people perhaps qualified for the umbrella of Habitat for Humanity or were able to qualify for the Small Business Administration loan. Perhaps unbeknownst to you, I submitted 20-plus grants to the United Way of Northern California Bowles Fire Disaster Relief for assistance with ground from the Susa Reddymix to bring the elevation to the pre-Bowles fire elevations, to restore some of the ground that we lost. And I've also brought some in. I've, you know, I've been working diligently. My lot is not a simple lot like Mr. Mosher's that is flat or other people's as far as rebuilding. I do, from before the fire, also had elevation differences between my neighbors, and I have seven different neighbors. So in any event, you can see that that is cedar. Ever since November, ever since I heard about this ordinance, I have been building with wood with that understanding. I recently painted it. Also, I have permission from Paul to paint the metal there, which I see now. You know, originally, I did say cedar, but then when I was doing the metal, I thought that was consistent, and I didn't remember. However, my neighbors, the Layotians there, they are more than happy, and over time, I can pay for it, for me to construct in front of that, because we put the railroad ties, you know, with all that. That was a lot of labor, gathering the railroad ties, earning the money. I also have to work for a living. I'm not retired, and I don't have any, you know, trust fund or what have you. I'm not in any welfare or anything, you know. And so I have a daughter who's graduating from high school this year. I have other things in my life besides my fence, although my fence has consumed a lot of my energy and time and resource, everything. So I have, I just lost my train of thought right there, and thank you for listening so well, but it is damaging to me, all this. I've had suffered damage to no fault of my own, the Bowles fire. And I feel like the city, even though Ron's a very methodical person in his experience in the law and legal and manipulation of the word and pictures and these things, and in good and...
Okay, Holly.
I appreciate, I'm just saying...
Is there anything to add specifically pertaining to this?
Yes.
Do you have a response to Ron's...
Well, this is regards to the thing that I am just appealing for more time. Actually, I'm not just trying to be an abuser. And as far as the elevation, we had pre-Bowles fire elevations. I had a deep basement. It's impossible to rebuild that. I have a dog and the different stories. It's in the letter that I wrote to Monica. I wrote a first version to Mark, but Monica was a little more detailed, and I can write more. So I plead, and I don't see that there's any hope in hell, and the Bowles fire was hell, but the aftermath of Bowles fire has been worse than hell, far worse. And I don't see any way in hell, and I'll try not to be emotional so I don't have this murmuring against me in the background, but I don't see any way in hell that you guys will vote in favor of not revoking my fence permit, given the presentation that Ron just made and me not being able to make a sufficient defense right now, because there is, I could go point by point what he explained and just go through it, but I don't feel that you guys have the patience nor do you have the time. And I'd be happy...
Well, if you wanted to go point by point, that would have been a good place to start. I don't get the sense...
I don't remember. I couldn't tell.
I don't get the sense, excuse me, I don't get the sense that you have any substantive rebuttal to anything that he says.
It will ask me a point, anything he said, because that will be helpful, because I don't really remember anymore. So if any of you could please ask me any question, that would be helpful right now.
I believe it was your job to arrive with your points. In other words, you had some homework to do.
Well, I only saw these things right now. Just when I came in, I didn't know.
We need to move on and stay with the facts.
Okay, well, the facts are what? That yes, it's cedar along the thing. Ever since I received these things, I speak to Paul all the time if there was any issue. Go ahead, Mark. Thank you.
Where is it cedar at, though? I mean, I'm looking at these exhibits. This is metal.
That's cedar. You see a little bit of metal, but see all that red? That is cedar. Everywhere you see it's red, it's cedar planks.
But that isn't, though, right?
Because that I did way back when, and that's cedar. And if you see the crossbars...
These are cedar?
But hang on a second. Let's just stick with that one that you just showed to go to facts. The one where you see the crossbars way in the back? I planned fully to put cedar on that when I can afford it, step by step. So in the meantime, I worked on sealing my yard and then recently painting it so to address the glare. Previously, the glare, you know, as I submitted the thing from October 12th to you, where we said... we said, oh, the, the glare was the glaring, what can we do, you know, for the glaringly obnoxious fences, whatever? And so I took care of that for both myself and my neighbor by buying paint, and I, so it's not like I'm, as Ron described me, somebody who's not trying to cooperate or help.
Excuse me for a second. Now, everything that you just said has been said before. We, we've heard.
This is new.
We've heard the excuses before. We've been on this fence issue for the last three years.
Well, I'm finished, then. Thank you very much, and I would like to submit something to a, a panel again for your consideration. I would like someone else, if he'd like to speak for me. Thank you.
Holly, Holly, when we're over tonight, would you stay to talk to me?
Yes.
Because simply getting a stop to construction doesn't solve the problem, and I might be able to offer yourself assistance.
Yeah, I'm just trying to build a fence, and then I want to build my house. I'd rather build my house, but I've had to build my fence. Thank you, Ron.
I under, I understand. If you'll, if you'll kindly wait after the meeting is over, let me give a suggestion to you that might get you a fence, but one that your neighbors are not offended by. And I, and I, I think I can find a way to do that with CDBG money. So if you'll stay for a moment.
What's CBGB money?
Trust them on this one.
I don't know what CBG money is.
Yeah, and, and I don't want to take all these folks' time.
All right, well, thank you. And actually, I love my fence.
May I make a statement?
Yes, yes, please do.
Holly, we are not against you.
Oh, thank you.
We are not. We have given you three years, and we are trying to work with you.
Well, at first, it wasn't.
But you, no, please don't.
You go ahead. Sorry, thank you.
You have been invited several times to meet with the city because we, the city felt you didn't understand some issues and tried to help you.
And I speak with Ron all the time. Thank you. I mean, not Ron, Paul. Yes, thank you.
You need to take advantage of the help that the city is willing to give you.
And I do, and I have.
In a way that will be constructive.
And I have. Thank you.
You, you, you start spinning, you're spinning inside your head, and if you can just find some stillness to listen, we don't want to destroy your property. We want it to be in compliance with the codes that you originally agreed to.
It seems like some of my neighbors want to destroy both me and my property.
Holly, communities, communities like Angel Valley, communities like up by, up by the college, track homes, things like that, they, they operate under a certain sort of social contract. And what this fence does is break that social contract. Now, you can be as creative as you want with a fence, you know, it has to, you know, it can't break all the rules, but there's no law against creativity, there's no law against, you know, kind of doing what you want with a fence. But all of the problems that this fence has created, I mean, look at the thing.
I love it. For example, my neighbors, Troy and Tiffany DeValle, they're not up for being revoked, and they have, they're not following their plans. If they, if you brought their plans, what they had, they didn't.
Holly, you've taken a lot more time.
Right, well, I'm.
Theoretically, we could have just had you stay to three minutes, so now it's time we need to move on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine, but I'm just telling you, there's some injustice here that appears. But I will speak to it with you, Ron. Would you please come forward and speak? Thank you.
Yeah, hello. My name's Tim Thompson. I'm not a city, uh, citizen. I live out of town, but I've helped Holly quite a bit through this project.
Your address, please, sir?
Tim Thompson.
Address?
Uh, 2233 Lakewood Ranch Road in the greater Weed area. I am not a city person. I made that clear. Anyway, catastrophic, catastrophic loss to fire is a whole new thing here. I mean, it takes years and years to recover from something like this. To me, there's a new aspect that nobody's really had experience dealing with this. So there's, we're all kind of in new territory here as far as people's needs, people's ability to recover. So I'm seeing that creativity here is really not the issue. The issue here is somebody who ha, does not have the means to work on a timely fashion because they did not cover themselves with insurance. That's life. There's a lot of uncertainties to life. Anyway, the other aspect is the metal. Okay. Weed got incinerated with wood fencing. Holly and I thought that a fire-resistant fence could be a good statement for the future. Who's to say that there won't be another horrible fire? That metal is a buffer zone. It doesn't re, entirely repel fire, but it will resist. So if you go into some larger metropolises now, corrugated metal is kind of an end thing. Okay, I'm just stating a few things in Holly's behalf. That's all. So.
And then the elevations.
The elevations prior to the fire were never recorded. When the material, the hazardous people from the state came in, nothing was recorded. Tonnage, yards and yards of material were taken away. Nobody has any record of those elevations. So she has done the best she can to recover those elevations. If you have two parcels, Holly's on a hill, unlike most of Angel Valley people. She's on a rise there. There's a slope. So she's up on the high ground, her neighbors are on the low ground. How would you expect her to have her neighbors meet those elevations when there was older slopes? So there's a lot of variables here that takes many years with very little revenue to deal with. She's, she's brokered tail working on this stuff, and I think there should be greater compassion in her behalf. I'm a retired contractor. I, I, I'm doing this voluntarily for her, with her. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ron, did you have any responses that you'd like to give?
No, I would mention that the elevation that she's changing is on the high side of her property, not the low side.
Okay. Anybody have anything else to add? Uh, yeah, you actually do have the right to do that. Go ahead.
Thank you. As far as the elevation, I'm trying to restore the elevation to the pre-Bull's Fire thing, but I've written in the letter that I submitted earlier to Monica and to Mark, I don't know if it was in Mark's, but that certain aspects of my property was not destroyed by the Bull's Fire. Certain grandmother apple trees, a sidewalk in the front, my, because of the shape of my, I have low sides and high sides and side sides, and I have seven, you know, the whole, you know, locked in like landlocked type situation. So my friend there who appeared, he has a builder's level, and we took the, the shooting of the builders from where my house was, which was on the property line before the fire. So also, I lost two feet there, and it was, I was already four feet above my neighbors to my Pine Street side, the north there. So we tried, you know, not, you know, but I mean, to the north, I mean, there was a whole, like, retaining wall that got pulled down from the cleanup, and including my very, very deep basement there. So we took the elevation from the pine tree by my neighbor Mike Millers, whose house did not burn, and we shot a straight elevation, and my house was not on an angle, it was straight across all the years. And we tried to get as close as we could to that original elevation, and, you know, and then each little description, there's a different story. Down by here, it's this, down by there, it's that. And my neighbors, for example, I don't know what your smile is at me, but my neighbors, the Laurys, they also had a deep basement, they had a lot of material removed. And so it's not humanly possible for me, with a five-gallon bucket and a Polish backhoe, breaking my back to get these things done as fast as I need to get and would get it done. Again, the wire, the grant that I requested was this and that, and I have, I have, and I have not ill will, and I have goodwill, and to the greatest extent possible, I will continue to, to make the, the things not offensive. If I live on my property, if I breathe, if I build a house, someone is not going to like me. I mean, I had, you know, the story, so I won't get into that, but, but, you know.
Do you currently have plans to build a house, Holly?
Absolutely, and I have from the beginning. I've worked for, with a, a bill, a designer for years in the very beginning. She did it for me for free. And then when my neighbor built a two-story house, oh my gosh, it changed the whole thing.
I have, I have one.
And then I have, I paid somebody a lot of money. And then I'm working with a third person now.
I have one question for you.
16 by 24. Thank you.
One question before this is over.
Thank you, Paul, chairman.
What, why didn't you not build a fence until the house was, until you had better plans to build a house? Why did the fence come first?
Very good question. Thank you. The part of my fence was not burned down on the Bull's Fire, and part of my, I have a shed and different things that I have that were to do with the fire legitimately from the city, and some, my sidewalk, different areas, different property didn't burn, you know, my trees, some of my trees didn't burn, whereas my garage, my house, my basement, all that was destroyed. So, and I have a dog. And so because I didn't have insurance, I didn't qualify for Habitat, I applied right away for Habitat, I applied right away for the Small Business Administration. And I went through all, to all the small, the weed long-term recovery groups, and, and I, I was aware of everything, and I was hoping for the United Way of Northern California Bull's Fire Recovery Fund, once they took care of the immediate needs, and, and I went through a shock with all that denial, but, so to, and as things evolved, then I realized at a certain point, okay, the one designs were working, and so then I changed it, okay, on the top where my house was before, but then I realized, oh, that's going to be way too expensive to do a two-story up there, and everybody's going to hate me even more. And, and if I look down at them, and so my most recent thing is to build a house, and I would love to pause on this fence and not be persecuted and prosecuted and attack, feeling attacked whether or not I am, so that I can focus on the house.
Holly, was there a shorter answer to that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one last question also. These three art shade constructions.
Thank you for asking about that.
What are those for?
Okay, thank you. I, they're what I'm calling medicinal art panels. Those are not a fence or fence permitted. I built them before it was like anything was a fence. It was not attached to anything else and this and that. And it was for, I was being, my neighbor with the two-story house took me to court, falsely claimed that I was stalking her children, which I wouldn't do. I would like to share that with my neighbors so they really know what's going on.
Stay on the ball here, please.
Well, that's why I did it, because after she built her two-story, and, and also, not only that, but the sun, I'm, I'm getting skin cancer things, and they told me, I can't use my yard unless I have shade there. Trees were destroyed and these things. So it's part of my art.
Here's my question, Holly.
Oh, oh, and also, the rocks there are part of, from the church, and it was part of what I did.
Here's my question.
Thank you.
You asked permission to build one. Why did you build three instead?
Well, I didn't even know, in all honesty, that I even asked permission to build one. But the thing is, they're not completed. If it comes to the point when I do get my elevations correct, like restored and, and what the thing is, then I may end up eventually building a very practical 10 by 12 shed there, but I can't do it until I have a house. So it's just a matter of being able to utilize my yard and to be able to have shade and privacy. Otherwise, there's very, very little of my yard that I can, I used to get a flashlight shined at me, for example, from my neighbor here, all the time, like I'm a deer in the headlight. And, and it was kind of disturbing, so it's also my safe place still. You know, we have safe places.
Well, you say that these are privacy shields and shade.
Medicinal shade panel art privacy, but at the same time, they're art because I'm building this with the church rock, a very beautiful thing, and I'm, I had beautiful flowers there several years, and it's actually quite beautiful. People, people have come to me to say how much they love my fence and how beautiful these things are. Okay, thank you.
Okay. The bottom line here is that that's, you know, that's, this is not the way things are done, you know? People don't ordinarily build fences this way and take care of their property this way. And all of that.
My neighbors have a fence like I do. Thank you, sorry. Okay, I'll, I'll be quiet. Sorry, thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Planning Commission, let's discuss this. Carol, do you have anything to add?
I don't at this time.
Um, I just want to make sure that Ms. Hansard understands that our job is not, sounds cold, to be compassionate or to be emotional. We have one question in front of us, and we have one decision to make, and it's pretty simple. And so our job is to, to go along with what we have been presented by staff. It seems very straightforward, and we have to make a decision based on facts, not emotion, not compassion, not anything else. That is the job of our planning commission.
There's no need for that, though. Come on. There's not, it's just, it's getting out of hand up here even. So let's just all take a step back and just make this decision. I mean, I think it's pretty obvious that, you know, you've had four years, and you're still going on, so, you know, we, that's why there's rules, Holly. You know that I worked for many years doing the code enforcement and everything else in here. And I know that that was being built after that fire was going, you know, after we had the fire, unfortunately, and, and I agree, it's, I think Ron's trying to remedy this, so I think we can stop it ahead and, and let Ron see what he can do here.
I'd like to.
To see what he's, what he's offering you privately.
I.
No one said, he, excuse me, he made it clear that he wasn't going to tear your fence down.
The hearing is closed. Nobody in the audience is permitted to speak again. Thank you.
What, what I'm looking at here is a mess. There are so many permits and so many, so much non-compliance that basically what the city is doing is kind of asking for a do-over, to reevaluate everything that's been done to this point, see what is salvageable, and see what has to go. I think that Holly Hansard could really take advantage of this opportunity to unsnarrel this mess, to clean it up. Think of it as an opportunity, and you'll be a lot better off.
I'm going to move this along, and I move to support the revocation of the fence permit at 211 Pine Street, and would expect that immediately construction will cease on the fence, and this can move on to City Council.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
We've got so much paper.
We have absolutely nothing on the regular agenda this evening. Has everybody read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes, they're.
Approval of the minutes. Does anybody have a motion?
We don't have to.
On that? No? Okay. Commissioners' reports?
Mr. Carham?
I have nothing to report.
I, I, I just wanted to share, we're going to be asked, probably for a long time now, to deal with permits and things relating to cannabis businesses and like that. And sometimes, I hope when we get to the point where we're like frantic about, there's just too much, too much, I just, I got a kick out of, this is the city of Davis, their public, their planning commission will be having to come up with conditional use permits for 13 businesses applying. use permits for thirteen businesses applying for dispensary and part of the dispensary, these businesses, I think it's kind of fun. Medical, recreational, drive-through and delivery. So there are cities that are dealing with quite, quite the.
Proven to, huh?
Yeah. There are thirteen. There are thirteen that have applied. So it could always be more complicated.
Yeah. Anything new like that is bound to be complicated at first.
I have a question. What's happening with 451 Main Street? I just saw the sign that's up there on the fence. I forget what it says. It's, what is that going to, is that a, it either hasn't come before the planning commission or?
The second medical marijuana dispensary doing business under the name Cana Trading Company had its soft opening on Saturday and is now fully in business at that location.
Okay. That's what I thought.
And is that, it, how does that differ from the larger dispensary? I mean, there are, other than being really small.
There were two permits issued, one for La Florista and one for the Cana Trading Company. It has been described as a mom-and-pop store on one side of the street and Walmart on the other. But they have different, different business plans.
Excuse me, but could you get a little closer to the microphone? I can't hear Mr. Parham.
Sure. I was just saying that there were two medical marijuana dispensaries that were approved by the council and both are now open. One is La Florista, which is on one side of Main Street. And the other is the Cana Trading Company on the other side, immediately adjacent to it.
And, and that, that's, that is also medical strictly?
It is medical.
Okay.
The council has instructed the city attorney to write an ordinance that would allow the two that currently have medical to transfer to, to do both recreational and medical. He has a draft ordinance and I believe council is going to have a special meeting on April 5th to consider that on first reading. But since they're already licensed, it would, it would simply be an opportunity for them to operate. Now, the likelihood is that they would operate out of the same facility, but they are not required to do so under the city ordinance. They could have recreational in one location and medical in a second. The reason that they're allowed to do two separate is because no one under the age of 21 can go into a facility that's selling recreational. But a, a minor does have the right to go into a facility that is selling medical.
What, at what age? Eighteen?
Well, they can go in under, at any age if they're accompanied by a parent or guardian, but eighteen if they're not accompanied by a parent or guardian.
So if, let's say, for example, an eighteen-year-old goes, tries to go into an establishment that sells recreational and medicinal, can they go in?
He would not be able to go. If they, if they make the election to operate both facilities out of the same business location, then they cannot allow the eighteen-year-old in. And that's why they have to make a choice. Are they going to operate from the same facility or separate facilities? Now, with the one that has the larger footprint, they of course have a possibility of separation of space, which the smaller one probably does not have that opportunity.
Okay. Mark, did you have anything to add? Staff, do you have anything to report? Monica, Commissioner, report? I had something that I wanted to start talking about. And we don't have to talk about tonight. I don't even know if we can or how much we can. But the subject is updating the current sign ordinance. We've got a lot of new development going on, a lot of new businesses coming in, a lot of new signs going up that, now, because we don't explicitly state that this is not allowed, this is not permitted, it's sort of like the Wild West out here with, with signage. So if we can start working in earnest on some kind of new sign ordinance to sort of get this under control, that would be great. I'm not sure exactly how to move that forward beyond this point. That would be up to Ron.
If the planning commission asks the council if staff time and effort can be put into that, that particular item, council can add it to the, the work plan of the staff. Sign code was last updated in 2013. It took us eighteen months. It took us seven different iterations and what was adopted was a compromise. I looked back at the records and the staff was specifically asking that these flags not be regulated because of the amount of time and effort that staff was putting into trying to chase them down and get them to get a permit. And so they were specifically exempted. Now the question comes, should they be exempted if they're going to leave them up 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year and not take them down at any time? We do have banners that we allow on a temporary basis twice a year for like, things like sales. And so there's always a possibility to, to, to take on a little bit of a less of a, of a charge, not looking at the whole sign code, but look at whether you want to regulate or put some limitation on these flags. And the other one that is a concern to us because of wind is the, like the, the, I'm not certain, I can't come up with the name right now, but the, the A-frame signs like.
Sidewalk signs.
Yeah, like, like the person who does the tattoos has. We're not so concerned about regulating them except that in high wind conditions, we're a little bit worried about them moving.
I, I would say I'm concerned about regulating them because they make the town look tacky and cheap. There, there are multiple examples of cities flat-out prohibiting these things because of their tackiness. Ashland is an example of that. And I know Ashland isn't exactly the example we want to follow because they're a bit tough. I like that about Ashland and I like the way they want to preserve their historical district and their downtown area. They also have a lot of other rules that, that I like on there. So maybe we can take a look at other ordinances to determine the type of city, you know, we're going to start turning into over the next 20 years. Our, our sign ordinance is ill-equipped to, to handle that type of growth and have the town develop in a quality way. Because it's, it's a bit of a carnival out there at the moment.
Our sign ordinance is very generous.
So rather than redesign a whole new ordinance, perhaps we just need to amend the existing one in the areas of concern?
Yeah. There, I mean, there's some no-brainers that, you know, things that should be common sense that, you know, we shouldn't necessarily maybe have to put in, in an ordinance, but something like taking down old sign infrastructure before you put up a new sign. That should be a no-brainer.
I thought that was in the ordinance.
If it's not, I don't know.
Or, or.
There's a provision in the E-code that says that if a business goes out of business within a certain number of days, this sign has to be removed. On the other hand, there are historic signs within the community like La Florista and Black Butte, sporting goods, which, I mean, cities have spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep old signs.
Yeah, but that's apples and oranges. I think what, what, what's so unsightly are the big, huge, old, you know, like the one that was painted white, the fitness center should have come down.
Or let's say.
You know, that, those big metal signs that we're stuck with now because nobody will take them down.
Yeah, but we did compel them to turn the light off and we did compel them to turn it around. If you want to take it down, you got to sue them, okay? And you have a legal right to compel them to take it down. But I don't have a council that wants to file a lawsuit.
If somebody was, you know, if somebody was to have an old sign infrastructure, you know, you got a pole in front of the building or attached to the building in a lot of cases. And then it goes up to the side of the building and it sticks out and you got a square, you got a square frame and the old sign is gone.
Premier of reality, yes.
And then somebody doesn't bother taking that down and puts a rectangular screen over it. Now, if we don't have a provision in our sign ordinance to prevent something like that.
Well, when the, when the sign permit was issued, they told us they were filling the entire square. And so we, based on your complaint, we looked at the permit and we sent the building inspector to inform them that they had to put a frame around that sign so that it fully encompassed the entire framework. Because that's what they submitted as a permit application and that's what they got permission for. So we have responded to your complaint. I spoke to your father this morning during staff meeting and asked him if he would carry that message to you. Maybe he didn't. But we have told her that she has to put a frame around that sign that fully encompasses the framework upon which the sign is based.
I, my, my concern with that is, is we're only going to do what, exactly what we have to do. Whatever you tell them to do, they won't go above and beyond. A lot of places won't go above and beyond. They'll work around whatever's cheapest, whatever's most efficient for them to fulfill what you ask them to do. Like say maybe putting a phone number underneath it or putting something over it, on top of it. And just as long as they fill that space, they're in compliance. So there, there are ways around an, an ordinance that isn't properly, you know, worded.
Once again, same property owner owns both signs. Both signs had the right to come down when the businesses went away. The city elected not to file a legal suit. Staff can only do so much. At some point, when you do not get compliance, voluntary compliance, you have to force compliance. To force compliance, you have to be willing to file a lawsuit.
Amen.
If the city is unwilling to file a lawsuit against a business owner, compelling them to comply with an ordinance that they're unwilling to voluntarily comply with, you need to take that up with the city council.
Thank you, Ron.
I move this meeting adjourned.
Second.
Approved.
Approved, aye.
Aye, aye. Everybody aye? Nay, nobody.